Good evening. I'd like to call the Thursday, September 4th, 2025 Smithfield School for any meeting to order. Before we begin, if we could please stand and say, "Smithfield, why?" Hi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The actual words have been changed numerous times. So, anyway, one more time. Okay. Emergency evacuation help notification. In case of emergency, there are two main exits out of the media center. They are located to the right and left side of the media center through the set of double doors. Proceed to follow the exit signs to the exit doorways. There are restrooms located outside of the media center through either side of the double doors. There is a public comment signup sheet formed in the front if you plan on talking during the public comment section of the meeting. And to speak at any time of the meeting, please speak at the podium so that the audio is picked up. The first item is to consider and vote on a motion to convene executive session pursuant to round General Laws 42-46-5A, legal advice pertaining to PC-2025-04098, ML et al. versus Thomas Smithfield et al. in accordance with the Open Meetings Act round General Laws 42-46-582. Review of executive session minutes of July 24th, 2025, July 28th, 2025, and August 12th, 2025. Any person who will be discussing executive session has qualified and has been given an opportunity to have that session heard an open session. The committee did not receive such a request. This will require a motion.
Motion to move to executive session?
And a second.
Second.
Motion as made. Ms. Saddle?
Aye.
Ms. Hopkin?
Aye.
Ms. Levine?
Aye.
And myself, aye. I have no idea how long this one will take, so we'll be back. Are we going to?
We have the coloniary arts work.
Colonary arts, okay. The school committee did not take any votes during the executive session, so we will move on to item number six, which is consent agenda items, which are the approval of the minutes, the open minutes of August 21, school committee meeting, approval of August 21 site visit meeting, approval of open minutes of August 28, school committee meeting, 6.2 approval of bills, regular bills totaling $36,000, $583.08 direct checks from August 16, 25 through August 29, 25 totaling $19,781.62, and approval of the homeschooling list, which you have attached to this. So, this does require a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda items?
And a second.
Second.
Motion made, second. Are there any questions or comments? If not, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Item seven, high school rep settlement report, which we do not have, so we will move on to item number eight. Must have been a busy, tough beginning. Discuss review and approve fiscal '26 budget transfers. Does require a motion.
Motion to approve budget transfers. Second.
Any questions or comments? Motion as made, second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, okay. Now, we're gonna skip one here so we can get down to the...
Mr. Chairman, Patrick is not here yet.
He's not here yet.
I don't know what we do on this.
Ah, okay, so we will not skip down there. So, we will go right on to number nine, fiscal '26 budget and capital fund update.
Oh, so just to start off, Mr. Chairman, with the quick, a quick update on the operating budget. We had approved total operating expenses that was approved by the committee on July 24th of $10,021,719. As expected, it appears to be in line with prior years, which is to be expected with the openings of school. We have year-to-date expenses through 83125 of approximately $683,000. And then, we have encumbered and pre-encumbered funds of approximately $2.7 million, leaving available budget funds that are still uncommitted of $6,617,000, $17.25.
Questions on that? All right.
And then, to discuss the fund balance and the restricted and the capital reserve, I appear to have some...
Thank you. A motion.
Thank you. So, we'll start off with the fund balance. Just, I'll just walk the committee through. So, we started with the prior year audited fund balance, which was approximately $2.38 million. There was approximately $588,000 that was, that we have to deduct from that fund, from the audited fund balance, because those are restricted. Those are noted in Note 12 of the audited financials of 2024. Then, we, I just want to point out, that will leave us with a prior year unrestricted fund balance of approximately $1.79 million. And we are approximately at this current point, I just wanted to add, because we have not had our fiscal audit yet. Our current year projection for our current year fund balance, which is unaudited, will be approximately $29,000. And that is less the furniture and the children mats that the committee previously approved. And then, that will give us a projected fund balance that, again, unaudit, because we're adding the current year that has not been audited yet, of approximately $1.8 million for the fund balance.
Okay, we'll, we'll know those things. They tend to do the audit somewhere like the Beverly Center.
Yes, yes, Chairman.
But we'll get our, we'll get our thing, and we'll know if the magic number is right.
Yes.
Okay, any questions?
In theory, that could go slightly up and down the current year.
Yep, and I know something. Put something in one column versus another. Any questions on the fund balance where we're at now? So, I guess we're going to the back base, right?
Yes, yes, thank you, Chairman. So, in speaking with the town, they, they keep an account of the capital reserve. So, I just want to note that $1.1 million includes our capital contribution from the town for FY '24, '25, and this current fiscal year ending 6/30, 2026, after talking with Caitlin, the town manager. Once we remove the pending invoices that will be paid, three of which from invoice two, three, and application on one for clean care, which will be approved tonight by the school committee, and invoice one, which was previously approved at a prior meeting, I'm rejecting a remaining capital reserve of approximately $508,000.
And this, this is important, because when we get into our, when Patrick talks over these things, this is kind of the money that we save in the bank. And then, we will be talking about projections going into the future, et cetera, for that. So, that's why that's important. And these, as I recall yesterday from the billing committee meeting, those invoices that will be deducted and, you know, paid, that's, well, things can always, things can always pop up. That's the bulk of all the work from these two summer projects.
Yes, Chairman.
Okay, any further questions on this? Thank you very much. So, I think now that is, that takes it for ten to nine. If Patrick is ready, we could come right away, unless you need a little warm-up time. The heat is hot.
Actually, he probably doesn't sleep there.
Yeah, let's see. What, we'll tell you this, this here, this is...
We're gonna go to eleven.
Number eleven. Discuss review and approve the stage you are. Okay. Just, you'll give me a little background. The building committee met, yeah, we met yesterday, and we went over the projects that we had been talking about, and we put them in an order that made some sense financially over a five-year period. Okay? And as I recall from prior conversations, we are not locked into that order by the state, but they want us to have a plan that looks like it makes some sense going in, not all projects in the first year, for all the projects in the last. And now, I will turn it over to Patrick, who will give us, who did that need.
All right, thank you, everyone. So, I'm Patrick, double line with Colliers Project Leaders, the OPM for the two emergency projects, and the stage one, stage two applications for RIDE for the next five-year capital plan for those two public schools. So, we're gonna start with answering a question that came up during the school building committee that I didn't have the answer for, because my brain just wasn't there. And as soon as I sat down on my desk this morning, I had the answer. So, one of the things that we talked about, well, we'll actually go to our cash flow real quick. Now, David, when we were talking, when you were talking just a minute ago, you were talking about the money that we have in the, in the current capital fund. What is that balance rate?
I'm projecting, I'm projecting approximately $507,000.
And?
$507,000. Is that in addition to the 500 that we have right now, or is that, that's just the total?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
And bills paid?
With bill pay.
Right.
And our fiscal year funding from the town.
Right.
For '26.
So, we'll, we'll go to that here in a minute. But I want to start with no projects being slated right now, just looking at our cash flow. So, right now, what we are assuming is we are assuming that 500, or what we know, that $500,000 for this year, we're also starting with our $272,000, which is 35% reimbursement from the two emergency projects, right? So, that, that will come back from RIDE after those reimbursements are submitted. One has already been submitted, the CTE project, and then the ISU project will be submitted. And those come back faster than the annual June 30th deadline for your annuals. So, when we're talking about reimbursement, the important thing here is emergency projects, you get reimbursed sooner. And non-emergency projects that are part of your capital plan, those you get reimbursed each year after you submit for them at the June 30th deadline. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, before we're plugging in the costs for any projects for years, what we're starting with is we're starting with a five-year projection, assuming $400,000 is applied each year subsequently after 2006, which is the current fiscal year, which has $500,000 from the town, that $400,000 in 2027, 2028, 2029, and 2030. That's the information that we're operating with to start with. That means that over the course of those five years, we will have accrued in the capital fund $2,471,895.72. So, the question came up, how do we start at $4.3 million for this capital plan when we knew that we were generally gonna have about that amount of money? And so, the answer to this question is actually real simple. It has to do with RIDE and how much their reimbursement is. So, if we look at these numbers up here on the screen, if I can just get a picture. All right, let's see if we can navigate down to where we want to be. So, your capital improvement plan total, we targeted $4.3 million. And this was based off those estimates that are like three to six years old. So, we knew the numbers weren't gonna be on, on spot, but we had to operate with the information that we had at the time. Of that $4.3 million, 1.5 will be reimbursed by RIDE. That's your 35% rate. So, that means that the capital expense to the town is $2,819,000. So, that puts us between that $2,819,000 and the $2,471,000 puts us $400,000 off, which is actually pretty good, right? And knowing, well, it's divine. I'm sure that she would have found rent money and all sorts of little money hiding away and not use, unknown about, to be able to kind of fill in the gaps if we needed to. But that was the answer to that question, why do we start at $4.3 when we were kind of projecting at the time, based off of what we assumed that we knew from the finance department, $2.4 million. That's the answer. Does that make sense?
Yes. So, the projected cost, where the $4.3 came was from the estimate that was done years ago of what we thought was the cost for which projects. Because at the time, we had identified a number of things in our 25-year plan, but we hadn't prioritized anything yet.
So, what was interesting is in the first five-year plan, of all of those, those sheets of documents that we have, this, everything that you see here was a project that was identified with, with a number attached to it, and a number applied to a fiscal year. That total was 26 million. We knew right off the bat, we weren't going to bond, so we had to whittle it down. So, that got whittled down to this, which is the, the high school bathrooms, high school culinary and small theater room, emergency generator fire suppression, elevator renovations at the high school and the middle school, the high school roof replacement, and upgrade and renovate the ISU rooms. And then, as part of fire suppression project, it was also part of that money was applied to the fire alarm replacement to go from a simplex or proprietary base system to a non-proprietary base system, allowing you to have more choice of vendors. So, that's where we start. All right. So, now that we're, we've wrapped that up. So, when, in what we talked about with the SBC, what we landed on was we plugged in a bunch of numbers and with, with that same cash flow. And we basically attributed projects to different fiscal years. And the struggle that we ran into was that we kept running into situations where we ended the fiscal year in a deficit, which we don't again do. But what we wanted to identify was, with some additional information that Zabel was gonna run down today, and we synced up and we were able to talk through this, and we wanted to at least identify what we wanted to start with. Again, the SBC recommends something to the school committee, and then the school committee actually put this in. So, as we are looking at this, I'm gonna bring in a more updated version. So, this cash flow has a little bit more information on it for you, and I'll, I'll walk you through kind of what this does. I did this for two reasons. One, we want to be clear to RIDE, kind of how, how we're doing this, right? Because in talking with RIDE, we wanted to know if we go in, if we know that we've got $4.3 million worth of projects, roughly, that we can do with the money that we have, or that we're anticipating having. If we go in for 6.8, which is what we decided back on the last time we met, that was this revised project, we landed at this 6.847, and that was removing the lecture hall renovation, the culinary arts renovation, the fire suppression renovation, and the new elevators in the middle school and high school, because what we landed on was the elevators couldn't be renovated based off of the size or any amount of money that would be less than building the new elevators when they have security issues. So, that leaves that all of the bathrooms are identified as being necessary, the emergency generator option two, which gives you a new, smaller generator that still supports the building, but gets rid of your, your old generator that doesn't have, or that is having difficulty sourcing parts, your fire alarm panel upgrade, which is a minimal cost, because what we determined was that none of the devices had to be replaced, just the panel, and then the high school roof replacement and the middle school ISU renovation. So, in looking through what we have here...
Just one second, Patrick. When we talked last time to the middle school, the ISU renovation, we were dealing with numbers like 460 or something like that.
Oh, correct.
It has been, the numbers have been refined. Now, can you see them?
Yeah, it's now $379,000. So, that was the estimating error, assuming some HVAC work was needed that was not needed. So, we clarified that with Nicole, the estimator, and she corrected that. So, you see that old number here, that 429, and then we moved to this, oh, sorry. Oh, sorry, no, pull it back. The, the 379, and then the 429, you're seeing this number here because they're escalated. All right. So, I'm gonna walk you through the spreadsheet real quick. I know it's a lot, but I'm gonna try and make it as simple for you as possible. So, from our, we're gonna start with our assumed amount of money that is granted by the town each year to the capital budget. So, we've got $500,000 for 2026, $400,000 every year they're at. We're starting with this beginning balance, which is the emergency projects 35% reimbursement. There's some formulas happening here, but what is off to the side here is what those formulas are. So, we're basically starting with the end-of-year balance from the previous year, or in this case, at the beginning of our five-year period, the reimbursement for the emergency projects. We're taking the new year's funding from the town, we're adding 35% from the previous year's projects, which we're not doing the first year, and then for only 2027, we're adding 35% reimbursement for the stage two submission. So, that's all of the fees incurred for Colliers and Flam to put all that information together. So, that's what's happening in this first column or this first row here. We have a row for additional funding, which we'll get to in a minute, and then we get into our projects. So, by fiscal year, we landed on this order, which was restroom, restroom bays, what are called bays or sets, one and two, and these were identified in priority order. So, one being the restroom that we identified as the most in need, and seven being the one that was least in need out of the group that we're looking at. That's not all restrooms in the building. That was seven sets of restrooms that we looked at and then identified, hey, look, this is probably more than we could chew, but it's, it's at least a good starting place. And so, those are identified here. And then, also in this first year, we looked at the fire alarm panel upgrades for $38,000, because that's an easy, easy one to do. But with that amount of money, we ended in a deficit, right? And so, when we're plugging this in, this is what I wanted to show you at first. So, when we look at, and this is just down here, this is just a summary of what we were talking about earlier, which is the, that 4.3 versus the 6.8, RIDE reimbursement, all of that sort of stuff. So, in talking through an additional funding, one of the things that we looked at was, well, what is the money that we would need to basically break even in order to accomplish all of these projects with 6.4 million dollars?
Yes.
6.8 million dollars over the next five years. And those numbers are pretty hefty. So, for 2026, we have to find an additional 450,000, 550,000, 1.4 million, 100,000, and 150,000, and that keeps us even with our thin years being 2028 at $9,000, a $9,000 balance, and 2030 at a $3,000 balance. Projecting into 2031, we have this here so that we can see what the recouped 35% would do, assuming, again, $400,000 in 2031 would be granted from the town. Does all of that make sense, and do we have any questions?
I have one question. We had mentioned bundling the bathroom projects at a reduced cost. I'm assuming that, that bundled and with the reduced cost of those projects are out the window if we spread them out over five years.
Pretty much. So, there's, there's, when you bundle costs, one of the reasons that you get a discounted price is you decrease mobilization, right? So, when you take multiple projects, and you might bid out separately, and you bid them all out together, then the contractor mobilizes once, tackles them all, demobilizes, and basically their overhead efficiency is increased, and, and increased for them, and increased for all the subcontractors, and that allows them to reduce costs. They can purchase material in bulk, those sorts of things. You kind of realize some of those discounts. When you're spreading it out over five years, if you were to award this contract over five years, you might see some amount of money come back. But when we're looking at the total value, which is 3.7 million, including all the escalation for, for each year, then you're saying maybe 3.7 becomes 3.45, hopefully, if you were to bundle them all together and award that to a contractor to, to execute over five years, which would mean that they would be mobilizing, demobilizing each summer to get those projects not bad.
But that's one of the reasons why you see one and two together. So, one and two are bundled. So, you might get some, you should get some benefit there in the second, in the second year. Three and four are bundled. But the, the prices that are in there are as individual products. When you, when you get to phase three, when you actually bid these things, that's where you see, you know, the prices, the prices.
But it's not enough to take back on.
No, not at all.
Real cost savings.
But it would be something. A substantial cost saving, you know, once you even spread out in the higher prices.
So, basically where this lands us is, this shows us how we can break even, but going back to the town to say, do you have another $450,000 that you can lend us or, or give us so that we can accomplish this, is probably going to be a difficult step. And so, in talking with Dawn and David today, we came up with a, a plan that I wanted to kind of put in front of you, because what we'd like to go to town council with is two approaches. One is, hey, this is the project that we're doing with no additional funding, and this is where it puts us, so that you can understand kind of what the deficit is that's created by having to accomplish a small fraction of the work that needs to be done at the high school and the middle school and the elementary school, or the high school, middle school, really. That's where the majority of those 26 million dollars of the projects was. And so, we, we want to propose, or we want to show that at first. But then, we also want to come with a solution to the problem, which is how do we figure this out cash flow-wise so that we can actually accomplish the things that we're looking for and not go in, or not end the year in a deficit? So, in talking through this, one of the, the hopes is that there might be an ongoing conversation for the emergency generator to find some additional source of funding, whether that's the town, whether that's a grant, whether that's some sort of donation, who knows? But because there's multiple parties interested in the emergency generator feeding the building and operating the building as shelter should be needed, there might be a course of action that allows us to pursue additional funding somewhere else, right? So, we went ahead and pulled that out. So, you'll see no number here in any of the five-year projects, and I've just saved it down here so we can reference it later. Then, for the high school roof replacement, and cash flow-wise, what we needed to do was basically say, hey, we probably need to divide this up over two years, because we're operating out of essentially the cash in our wallet, right? We can't go into debt for this. We have to operate in a positive fashion. And so, the risk that you run with this is that we're doing a roof that one little section has been done, there's a section off to this side, and then there's a larger section off to this side. And so, when we're breaking those out into different sections over different years, you might get different contractors, they might be different systems, or we might be able to specify the same system, but you're getting different warranties with different timeframes. It's gonna create a little bit of a mess. The hope was to be able to bundle those all together, and then maybe by bundling it together, they also just redo the part that was just redone for a minimal cost, because it's in the interest of the roofers and not have to tie into an existing system. They'd rather just rip it all off and go, right? And that section's small enough, I think that that's a reasonable expectation. So, where we land is we land with a minimal need for additional funding. That minimal need would be $50,000 the first year, so that would be to this year's budget, we'd have to fund $50,000 to add. For the following subsequent three years, we would need an additional $100,000 added to the budget for the capital projects, which doesn't seem like it's as big of a stretch, because this year we were granted $500,000 versus, we're assuming $400,000 for every year they're at. If the town's...
That, that shows $50,000 in this year?
$50,000 this year.
That's right. Okay, yes. No, just, did I say that on the other? All right.
So, then...
It's an opportunity to fund 50,000 versus 500.
So, then, the, for the following years, we were basically saying, can you just match '26 in, in what, what you're offering for a capital fund transfer? So, that is a more, I think, reasonable position to, to come at than, or coming at than $450,000 right off the bat. The other thing that this does is, we basically had to go, let's identify a bathroom. The bathrooms are expensive. So, we have a bathroom cost, and this is what was approved from the SBC last night, printed PDF to preserve, to preserve it. Give me one second here, and I will find... Is this one looking for this? Oh, no, I'm working fast. So, the, each of those bathrooms is like between 400 and 300,000. I think we had one at like 290. And we can see each of those listed here. So, 578, 364, 401, 482, these are 482,000, right? 341,000, 543,000, 655,000. So, bathrooms in all these different chunks are expensive. When we're looking at everything else, specifically these orange items off to the side, these are items that are gonna be potentially critical to your facility. So, an ISU renovation not getting done, a fire lamp, a fire alarm panel not getting upgraded to a non-proprietary system, or a restroom renovation, probably not going to do damage to the building if you don't do them. If you don't replace your roof, which is out of warranty in time, and you reach a point of either catastrophic failure, which is not like the roof caves in, but it's like there's so much water intrusion that you're, you're now talking about a large amount of money to repair a, a section of it, instead of just paying a little bit less to do the whole thing. So, when we're looking at these items, we want to consider that and know that those are a little bit more critical in regards to the facility than the other products are. Same with the emergency generator. The emergency generator not only provides backup for your day-to-day operations, but also allows the, the school to operate as a shelter should be. So, the sad part of this is that the focus going in was bathrooms. That, that seems to be the most public, publicly spoken about need, both in the school and outside of the school, and that really, we wanted that to be the focus. But in playing with these numbers, we realized if we remove those, that's kind of how we get even, but we're still having to kind of ask for, for more funding. So, this is one proposal here. But what we can do is we can manipulate these numbers live, and we can talk about what options you might want to pursue in identifying projects that you may want to just remove from the stage two and be able to show a positive cash flow, or items where we can say, hey, we want to leave all these in, because we want, we want to be able to do them if the money comes along. to be able to do them if the money comes along. But if the money doesn't come along, what I did confirm with Ride, with Bill Timpel from Ride, was that we are operating at such a small scale when it comes to capital projects for a school district. There are school districts that are talking about 60 million dollars, 170 million dollars, 330 million dollars. We're talking about like four to six million dollars. It's, we're way down here on the scale of proportionality. So if we go in for six, eight worth of projects, and we only accomplish four, three worth of projects, or a little bit less, it will not stop the other projects from being able to be reinserted into the following five year plan. Does that make sense?
Yes.
That was a concern that we had.
But they, but they still have to be funded here for the first five years.
Correct. So, so when we, the way that we would do that is, for instance, we can talk about this, right? This 450,000, that seems a little bit, a little bit excessive, so we might swap some of these around so that we have some of the lower cost bathrooms up front.
Can I just add one thing before you go? Only for a very starting figure. You were just told we have 507. Shouldn't 507 be added to 272?
So, oh, yeah, sure. So the 507...
Five, and I, we don't have to use, 500 is enough, enough figure for me to use, but 500,000 in there would at least start to change the beginning of this thing.
But that's inclusive of 500?
And that's with, that's with all of that money paid, right? So we're adding our 272 to our...
That includes the 500 we got this year, right?
That includes the 500, yes. All right.
So you take that out of 26.
Yeah, so essentially we're removing this, and we're essentially starting with 700. So then we add our seven to our 500, which gets us to 772, right? So this is the, this number here plus the $500,000 that was given by the town this year, and that gets to our 507, and so that, that is where we land for this fiscal, this fiscal year. 772,000 dollars after the 2...
It's 507.
Huh?
507,000.
Correct, so this is the 500 right here?
Yeah, 500,000.
Yep. Seven thousand, not seven.
Oh, 7,000, oh, sorry.
I know that doesn't go anywhere near what we need it to be.
No, no, it must be accurate, absolutely. So for instance, we could adjust this right now to this. We can increase this amount by, call it five, just using round numbers. And then we can increase this amount by also... So when we go into Ride, what we can show them is this, we would show them this picture. This is the amount of money, the additional funding that we need, and we would basically explain it as, we're having conversations with the town about what funding would be required in order to do these. The hope is that we're able to come to some sort of agreement or arrangement with the town to be able to fund the needed projects for the school, and then we go in to Ride with that, and then we just hope to be able to navigate it as best we can. If we have to cancel projects, when, once you're at stage three, once the stage two gets submitted and approved, then you move into stage three. You would hire your OPM, you would hire your designer. From that point, you get into value engineering or value management. You start going, how do we save additional money? What do we cut down on finishes? How do we adjust square footage? Like those sorts of things. What roof system do we want to go with? Maybe there's a different roof system that comes out that's way cheaper. We don't know, right? So at that stage, you get into your cost saving measures and/or cost cutting measures where you go, okay, we're not going to do bathroom six and seven, but we're going to do one through five, right? We go into Ride with a plan, this is how we're planning to execute, with a knowledge need of additional funding, and then we explain that situation to Ride with a letter that is included with the stage two. All of that makes sense?
Just one other thing to let you know, we had discussions about the elevators last week, and knew that they were an enormous amount. We did get a few estimates on chairs, lifts, and they were, these are rough estimates, 50 to 70,000 for each school.
Between 50 and 75, depending on the stairs.
Right, yeah, depending, make sure that they fit. There were a lot of ifs, but at least we have a number that we can look at. And Patrick said that with bathroom number seven, which is the one on the second floor, that number was close enough where we could be able to roll that in, again, funding there, and not really change that, because we'd be saying, well, if we need a bathroom on the second floor, then we need... Okay, so that should be done. Now, which raises a question I thought of overnight last night. We didn't put anything on there for the middle school to have 50 to 70.
Yeah, so...
And I know it's adding to something, but it seems to me we should throw that in the last year.
So what, what you can do with that is for the ISE renovation, is you, you would basically say, hey, we've identified a need for our students to be able to navigate the building that might be in the ISE program, which would need to navigate the building.
Even though that's on the second floor, we never...
Yeah, so, so when it comes to things like, we'll call them small adds, right? For instance, when we did these emergency projects, we didn't go into Ride with a proposal saying, we're going to demolish the greenhouse. That, that came up as we were going out of bid, we were like, oh, let's look at that. Ride doesn't care. We're talking about an amount of money, if we're adding another 500,000 dollar project, they will care, right? If we're talking about an add to an existing project that is justified in, in the scope of that project, we're good. That make sense?
Yes, it does. The answer's my question.
And we didn't have either of those on.
No, we didn't, because, because when you told us we were going to do bathroom seven, the other one just came up in my head overnight. Shouldn't be dreaming like that, sure. All right, so where are we now? Okay, continue.
So essentially now, I will open the floor to y'all, and we can talk about kind of what, how we want to approach this and what we want to do if we want to make any changes, if we want to make any changes to the existing plan proposed by the building committee, and then how we go about that.
And those things that you see out there, I think in the fashion code right now is what the building committee said yesterday.
Yes.
Yeah, so the, the order of these projects per annum is the same as the SBC approved ones, and this one that we're looking at is the full sum with all projects included. Or we could opt to remove some amount of projects of your choice to be able to decrease the ask for additional funding while still accomplishing an amount of projects of the five year plan.
And he's put the escalator figured in there, so...
Can you go back? Why is the bathroom number for one and two, 700 there and 1.1 million there?
Oh, so this one?
Yep.
You're talking about this one?
Yep.
That's just one bathroom?
So change it to not one and two, 1.1.
Just one and two.
Says one and two.
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, sorry, again, this was, I copied the page and Dawn and I were...
And we had a different cost for each of the sevens.
Yeah, so, so for, for modifying this right now, what we can do is just put them all back in, and then we can talk through how we want to modify this to land where we want to land. So I will turn the floor over to y'all in discussing how we might want to go about this.
I'm just going to tell you my, my general approach that I look at it is, first of all, I mean, there's escalation factors. For us to say 400,000 a year, you know, doesn't even take an escalation factor. So we, we have to be pushing for a, an increase over time, and they've got to know these things across the line. We're talking districts around us that are spending 60 million dollars. This is 4, 5, 6 million dollars, okay? And it's only part of what needs to be done, but it needs to be done. And I also just, from pure business standpoint, I would much rather see it start out at one level and increase over time so that you, meaning the town, have the target where they know, as opposed to saying, boom, we need a million dollars right now. I'd much rather say, we need this much, and this much, and this much, and go. And even if some of the years we actually get ahead, all right, it's easier for them to budget, it's easier for them to target. That's my general approach. And I don't like backing off to the numbers of 100,000 or whatever they are, because, you know, we do a bathroom, we'll be...
I think the important thing too here is we've received a lot of pressure from the town council in the past that we have not been wisely using our capital funding or that we're not making enough improvements. And what we're clearly demonstrating here is that we haven't been given enough money to be able to make any substantive changes. We've done bare minimum because we've gotten bare minimum funding to do that. We clearly need a large amount of money to be able to execute underneath these projects, and we literally can make, not make progress until they properly fund us.
So if I may, real quick, when we're talking about this 26 million dollars from the previous estimates, we'll call them historic estimates, and we whittled that down to 4.3, I want to remind everyone, and I'm going to present the same information to the town, it is fact, and it is something that we have to wrestle with, that when we looked at that 4.3 million dollars, the current day estimate for that is 12.7 million dollars. It is close to three times the amount of money. And granted, COVID happened, and we've had all of these external, exceptional, once-in-a-lifetime, hopefully, economic impacts, right, that have happened to everyone in the world. But it is something that we have to recognize as a governmental body or a series of governmental bodies that, that manage this town over time, is that as you push things off, they just get more expensive. So if something looks scary now, it will look scarier later unless you know that you've got a windfall coming. So as we're talking about these things, you're exactly correct, that we have to identify the fact that we are, or we have to acknowledge the fact that we are talking about an amount of money that's uncomfortable, and we're, frankly, we're talking about a number of projects that's uncomfortable based on what needs to be done.
But then we're also picking a lot more projects on that capital list, which the town council approves every two years, so it's not like we're making these things up. And if you want to go past year five to year 20, they're enormous numbers.
And there were questions during the building committee, we have a well-armed group of parent volunteers, union representatives and so forth, and there was a question from one of the parents who has construction industry background as well, that asked about, you know, how much are we really spending though? And then we just need to replace the entire school in 10 years from now. That is not an option, it's not on the table, it's been identified multiple times by the town, that we don't have space anywhere else in the town, that this building has good structural bones, and that we need to keep building on the building. If that's the message we're receiving from the town, then they, this is our only capital way, and we just have to relent that in a way where, I don't know what other option they would suggest, honestly.
The removal of the generator from there, that wasn't with the assumption that it's going to be a project that's done with just another source of funding. That was just negating that from the phase two projects?
And hoping that there would be a conversation later on. And it was, it was just a meeting with David, Dawn, and myself today in talking through, how might we go about this, right? To lessen the answers.
Yeah, because that brings it down to a $50,000 shortfall, is correct.
But that's also getting rid of all the bathrooms except for one.
One and two, or just one?
One.
That's just one bathroom?
Yeah, so, so how we had this previously was, we just had this single bathroom, which was bathroom set, well, sorry, single set bathroom, there's two bathrooms, boys and girls, and 694,000. And this is total project cost, right? So we're adding the 20% onto the hard cost, and we're escalating after 26, because all of the estimates that we got were escalated through 26. So we're escalating 4% each year, so 4, 8, 12, 16. All of that is baked into these numbers, so if they shift around, those, like, this 655 will go down by 16% if we move it to the first.
And the 35% reimbursement is baked in as well.
Correct.
So it's continued to fund us.
Where is that second bathroom's cost in absorbed? When you remove it from...
It did, we dropped it.
Just dropped it?
It's not happening.
Okay, okay.
In that.
So when, when we're talking about these hard decisions, right, so this is, this is bathroom set one here, it's 578,000. We multiply that by 2, to get that 20% for your soft cost, which Ride requires you to carry in the proposal. And then the 364,000 for bathroom set two, multiplied again by that 20%. And so the original plan, based off of what the SBC approved, is bathrooms one and two happening in 2026, basically this coming, this coming summer is when they would be on.
And that, that's what we approved yesterday, you know? Don't forget the numbers up top of the ledger. We had, our job yesterday was to come up with the actual...
The flow.
The flow of the work.
But if you put...
One and two are just... This is what was...
So can you go back for a second to the spreadsheets? Because you, you've now combined data with not appropriate numbers up at the additional funding needed, so I just feel like that's a misrepresentation.
Sure. So what we'll, what we'll do is...
Yes.
We can basically modify this however you want. So you tell me what you want to move, and right now, what we can do is we can operate with assuming no additional funding, which is going to put us in a deficit each year, but as we move things around, we can talk about, okay, what are we comfortable asking for in 2026? What are we comfortable asking for in 2027 as far as additional funding on top of the 400,000 numbers?
Right, yeah, I just wanted to, you know...
Sure, please, like...
We worked very closely with this yesterday, but I don't think it says apparent what the additional funding needs. So at the top, on line three is our assumed town funding that we're getting year over year, and then the blue line that's highlighted would be the additional funding that we need for line 20, our balance at end of year to eventually, to break even. We're not even starting, we're starting in a deficit. And so the numbers that he plugged in on the other screen, we essentially would need a million dollars every year from town council just to hit seven bathrooms, the generator, the fire alarm, and the ISE.
Yeah, so you can look at this as whatever this net, this negative number is, so 429,000 is what you would need. You would need 429,000 additional funding.
Just to start off the bathroom.
Just to start off at zero the next year.
Realistically, you need to pad that with additional money, because you can't run a direct fund with...
Zero dollars.
At zero.
Or 9,000.
7,000.
7,000.
7,000.
I think that these were planned to bring a responsible or reasonable ask to the town council, I think. Just as, we couldn't come up with 429,000. I'm sorry, 429,000.
429. 429.
They're probably in my mouse, I'm sorry.
Well, that's how we came to the fact of having one bathroom.
But even that one bathroom, if you still start end of year with one bathroom, that 435,000 deficit, right?
Uh, no, if you flip back to the other sheet, then, so that, that 1.1 million...
I didn't see that number change.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Juggling laptops. So I've got maneuvering in here.
If it's only one bathroom, it's like 600.
So what do we want to dump?
Yeah, I want to see the balance at end of year with only one bathroom.
All right, on your one?
Yeah, that's one bathroom and a fire alarm. And that one bathroom prioritized was identified as the bathroom when you first entered door 18, it's on your right, right before you get to the 14. And we did that because it's the most public facing as well.
I think we're giving up before we even try. To be honest with you, we have to go with these, and we have to, they have to know. This is not cheap with this money and this, and this, this. And personally, I think we should be looking at in the year 2027, we're already in 26, and I don't have any out of vote, that any extra money will come in from the town for this fiscal year. I would be looking at 300,000 in '27, 400,000 in '28. This is extra, okay? 500,000 and then 600,000. This would be the four years on top of the 400,000 that we have in there, which is already below what we're getting this year, and is getting eaten away by the escalation factor. So I think we need to use numbers like that. I don't think that's unrealistic. It gives them something, they have to know that we have to fix these buildings. These are the biggest buildings, you know, in the town, and, and we are 100% at their mercy in order to fix it. We can't just do it. We have, we have to spend our money on operating and running schools and educating. This is a specific area, and they have to know that it's going to cost some money to fix this, you know?
Maybe I should clarify, please, Jerry. What, what I was suggesting was just the ask for additional funding for this current fiscal year, the town and the school department are operating, that has to be a reasonable ask.
Well, the current fiscal year is already done. I mean, you can't ask, it's, it's 500,000 dollars. All right, that, that's a done deal. Okay? And whatever we spend in 26, this current year, when they get the reimbursement from the second, that may show a deficit over there, but we're ready to reimburse it. I'm not worried about that deficit from year to year. What I'm worried about is the overall score of all these projects and the amount of money that they have to know to take to build this stuff. Now, 50,000 dollars, I'm going to give.
No, no, I understand.
Dawn, I think they need to be able to see increases than is showing.
And starting cutting down on these projects. We've already cut down from whatever the amount of projects were there. You know, we've had a bunch of these.
Not only that, I mean, this is five years. We haven't even touched the bathrooms on the council. That's not even, so.
Right, all the doors and the, you know, the worst.
Everything that's on that. I know.
Another question. When we present this to town council, will we have pictures?
For, so.
Okay, that was just pictures. They were on the tours, but still, people only sitting there. We're not townspeople voters, you know? We might not see the, how awful conditions they're in, you know? It might just be a wild shock factor, people sitting there.
Oh, Matt from Slam just said that he is progressive.
Perfect, yeah.
Yeah, perfect.
It's not a public, it's an existing condition.
Yeah, so just so we know, locations, bathroom one is over here by the auditorium. Bathroom two is at the main entrance area.
Gym entrance.
Gym entrance, sorry, excuse me. Bathroom three is the main entrance. Bathroom four is by your gymnasium. So these are just, this is not a full locker room renovation, it is just the toiletries. Bathroom five is the nurse's office. And bathroom six is up here by the music. So.
And seven is the second floor.
No, seven, yeah, seven is the second floor, and I've got the, here. So seven's located, oh. Right here on the second floor by the stairs.
And one, bathroom one is also a staff bathroom, right?
I think they flagged that right now, but I don't know if it's, it's just a staff. It wouldn't be used for that. The reason we prioritize that one is because it's public facing and used by the public. But it doesn't have to remain a staff.
No, I don't think it would be a staff.
Yeah, no, no, no.
The conditions for the bathrooms.
So I think it's important to know that there are staff bathrooms in this building that are not on our list whatsoever. So we have additional, I think, four or five bathrooms in here that are not on this.
Yeah, for instance, if you see a highlight in yellow and you don't see a number on it, it was a bathroom that was flagged, but was not identified as a priority because we knew that by the time we got to seven, we're going to be over what we could afford. So we've got some additional stalls in this corner of the building over by storage receiving, by the new CTE room, our rented CTE room, by the cafeteria. Oh, those are the new ones, that's right. Um, science wing, which are newer than the rest of them. And then over here in the bottom right corner of the building, by the old, old I C room, that's great. So, and then bathrooms that were talked about at some point on the second floor, there was an additional set, but those don't actually exist anymore. It's just for one day.
So obviously, we have more questions, but we have a motion, we need a motion this evening on what is inclusive.
Right, which is what you were going to present to the state, right? Zap off to the state, and then what the town council will see. Now, from the discussion yesterday, what the state region needs to see is the work we have proposed, right? Obviously, with our discussion through town, we do need to talk, hey, you got to up the ante on the funding.
So they need to see the work that we've proposed, the work planned for accomplishing that work, and they need to see how we're funding it. They need to understand how we're funding it, which we have to be able to show, hey, we're actively supporting this. And the way to do that, and talking with Billy Trimble, is to show, because I walked him through exactly what this is here with the additional funding line. So I've got what we're receiving, what we're assuming we're going to receive each year, and then what the additional funding would be needed. That's what's going to be put in front of town council, and that's what we're going to discuss. But it's not guaranteed, right? The additional funding is like a target. But it shows Rye that we're acknowledging, we understand that that money doesn't necessarily exist yet, but we're working on it, and we're in conversations with the town. Rye knows that these conversations can be difficult. There are certainly, yeah, certainly municipalities in Rhode Island that have very similar struggles in regards to school board or school committee versus town council's ideas of how to spend money. So they, Rye is interested in supporting projects that support schools. So as long as we can show them that we have an actionable plan that is backed by good drawings and research and understanding of what these projects are, and that we're developing a plan to pay for them. So what we probably can't do is we can't show them that we're ending each year in a fiscal deficit. So we need to put an ask here, or we need to adjust projects either by removing them from the five-year plan or by adjusting them using math and statistics to figure out which ones would be less expensive in what years based on the accrual of funds over that five-year period. I've already done that a lot. I don't know that we're going to get a lot, we're going to get very far doing that. If we get down to, there's a couple thousand or 50,000 of deficit in one year, we might be able to shift, we can move some things around to be able to save some money and get under or get over that threshold. But I think we have to either talk about removing projects from the five-year plan or adding an additional, additional funds to the ask.
In fact, right now, year 2030.
Yes, sir.
We're 600,000 down.
Yes, sir.
A few of that.
In 2030, so we're 600,000 down. In 2031, you recoup that 35% in.
Right, I, yeah, so are we to look at that as, instead of being 600, are we to look at that as 400? I mean, I wouldn't.
Yeah, no, you have to look at it as.
Okay, so I'm looking at the 600,000. So the ask up there, three, four, five, and six, needs to be approximately 600,000 more to make those numbers and do those projects. I mean, if you're sorry, but I'm just telling you right now, I'm not looking for something that cuts projects. You can't, we are so cut to death, you know? And the ask is going to be tough, but we have to at least try that before anything else happens.
Should we assume that we can get the same amount that we did this year, but 500,000? Because that would be up on June 30th, about 500,000, an extra 100,000 assumed.
So it's not going to change the math? Because if we put this up to five, I mean, this is an optics thing, right? So if we want to assume 500,000, we could drag that across.
I was just thinking for like, you know, I'm thinking about, that's what we got this year. Assuming we still get what we get, it looks a little less than asking for more.
Sure.
You know, like I just.
No, you're right. I mean, if you say, okay, here's our base, let's like.
Because that's what we got, I would hope that they wouldn't come as after giving us 500,000.
And so now, you're at 102.
Right, exactly.
Well, but you're finishing 29 in the deficit because of the projects that are spent.
Right, but what we're catching, I mean, we finish a year in a deficit. It's more than cash flow, but you're never going to have that thing work out perfect with a five-year plan like that. We'd have to start out with a big wad of money, not happen. And so one of the years is done, but, you know, it's like where you finish. And where I look at that, we finish at 100,000. They, you know what, they can trim 100,000 off. We have to, they have to put that foot forward, you know?
And they have to see these numbers to have the proper discussion about it. And we can go in with that mindset. If we understand, you know, what we're asking for here, it's important for them to see the entire picture.
It might be helpful too, to also see the years going back five or six years to see the years that we got nothing. So we might not be asking for additional funding. We might just be asking for proper funding since they didn't fund us three years ago.
Sure.
So just to see the years we got nothing, you know? So I think maybe them seeing, we haven't always gotten money, and we're not just stashing money, which I think a lot of the town thinks we have this bucket of awesome money that we're just holding on to. I don't know why anybody would hold on to it.
They haven't charged it to you yet?
Yeah, exactly. We still have to ask from 1960. But, so maybe just seeing, yeah, it might look like we're asking for additional funding, we're just asking for back funding from what we never got, you know?
You'll pay me now, pay me later type thing.
Yeah, you know, maybe, you know, and then a half years ago.
So can we bring this to somewhere? Some, where do people feel like, happy with what's up here now?
So what I would ask is, are we able to adjust our additional funding for 2029 so that we don't end 2029 in a deficit? Because whatever we approve tonight is what I need to bring to town council for our proposed submission. And then also what we're going to submit to Rye.
It looks like the only way you're going to do that is if you move the emergency generator to 2030.
But you could also remove, we talked about this yesterday as well. I don't understand why we would include bathroom number seven if we don't have the chairlifts in there. I just, in my opinion, if you can't get to the second floor to use an ADA compliant bathroom, we have no reason to make it an ADA compliant bathroom. They just, they have to go hand in hand. And if we don't have that on there at all, I think that wouldn't, that would help ease the cost.
Well, ease the cost, but it also helps encase the funding in year. Because you've got to remember, when you get into phase three, the actual bidding process and the actual value engineering changes all these things. We're dealing hypothetical right now, what they should be. And I watch it with the middle school addition, I mean, the elementary school additions. And we caught a sweet spot where we had a couple of bidders who really wanted the job, and it was between when a lot of construction was going on in the state. And that helps you out. You don't know that until you get to phase three.
I have a question. So we've had 2026, that's only bathroom number one, right?
This is current.
So where does number two go?
So we'd add, we need to add two back in.
Okay.
Somewhere.
All right, so number one is the one in the auditorium.
Right?
And you could add two to 2030.
27, you've got everything.
Yeah, everything else.
We just push everything out. Put, so 2027 becomes two and three, 2028 becomes, you push it all forward.
So then I need to just really quickly.
Reduce to six bathrooms and just spread it out further.
So this is going to be two point four. This becomes two point eight. Three, two, and point three, six. So now they're all escalated for the year that they're set. For the two years.
Five, six, and do we take seven?
No, you gotta change the restroom order numbers underneath. They're just not there.
Bathroom seven has been removed. Bathroom two is back in now.
It's just the numbers underneath that.
Yeah, that's.
Sorry, text box format, Excel is never a great idea, but it is the easiest way to be able to display this. So now we should be looking at the correct order for each year. My correct number for each year. So this is bathroom one, this is bathroom set two, this is bathroom set three and four, this is bathroom set five, this is bathroom set six, bathroom set seven.
And then we would, I assume, reposition the roof as well? Because now we've combined the roof with our two, so we.
Should, yeah.
Move up maybe? Well, Angelo was.
Angelo wanted to combine it into a single cost, and for a good reason, right? You're probably going to get a little bit of a better cost on it, and you're going to get one warranty to cover the whole thing. And that's, that's the smart way to do it. But what we're talking about is being in a situation that's fiscally restricted. So we go in with whatever proposal you'd like to go in on.
I think it combines and moves to 29.
All right.
See what it looks like.
So the dust is settled, where do we at right now in terms of work? The only thing that is, we've lost is the bathroom seven?
Right now, yes, but let's see where this, I don't know. All right, I'll bring the desk. Next time, I'll have more. More space, so I can move my mouse. All right, so this is basically what you're looking at right now.
Can we change our additional funding meeting needs now to not show a crazy surplus?
Well, I want to make sure I know what work has been lost on this stuff.
But he's just going to fill those numbers in so we can look at it and then see the total picture.
Because you're still running a deficit here. And the problem is, I didn't think about this. So do you want to, do you want to ask for more money in certain years? Like a large sum in certain years? Or do you want to ask for incremental amounts over time?
Well, it gives them more time to prepare to fund us.
I've always said it should be incremental, and that's what I would want if I was on the other side of the table.
So I know 2029 is a big ask, but that's ample time for them to prepare for the funding.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so you want to go, so if we just did this, and we're going to wind up at like one, three fifty, let's see.
See, that's, that's what I don't want to do.
So then.
Two hundred is too little.
So then we have to add something back in to 2027.
Yeah, that's going to be higher. They got to start next year, 500 plus.
Half the work, half the work. I thought we had two bathrooms, I thought we had two and three in 2027.
Yeah, you have one, two, and then three.
One in 2026, two in three in 2027.
But two is a little. We're shooting around too fast here, you know? We got to, let's settle in on some things, and we can worry about the other parts later. I still want to know, what are we missing for work?
Just bathroom seven.
If that's the case, what we're doing is we are taking a bathroom off of here and we're paying for a generator, which we think we shouldn't be paying for.
Well, I think it's.
At a cost, at a cost that's more than that bathroom we've just taken off.
Or at least a split.
But I think the adjustments that were made, bathroom two and three and four were bundled together. But I think, how can we move bathroom two? Do we want bathroom three in 2027 as well?
Patrick, you tell me?
Yeah. It's our decision. He's going to present, we'll look at, we have inside. All I'm saying is we're dropping a bathroom, and we're paying for something that we don't think we should be paying for in full. And we're putting it in for full. And we're taking that thing off so that if we do have funds or whatever happens, that's going into year six, including the chairlift, because that's tied to that.
So if we're looking at this the way that it's set up right now, you're asking for additional 500,000 in year, for next, 2027, next year's budget. If you have 800 falling year after, that's still incremental-ish depending on what kind of your funding. That's, I think it's incremental, I think it's a justified amount. The question, oh, well, why do you need 4.2, or 1.4 million dollars? It's because as soon as you go into the next summer, you're then having to foot a 2.2 billion or million dollar bill. So, and then you're ending that year at a 96,000 dollar balance. There's got to be, they have, everyone, the town has to understand the accrual process because we're operating off of cash, not off of debt.
And how it's not a bad thing to be ending this after all the reimbursements of the five years with still 1.2 million to start with.
Why would I pay you 800,000 in 2028 when it's not needed?
Because you need it, we need it in 29.
Right, so why don't I pay you 1029?
Sure.
So this is what I was trying to say. How would go that long? I'm saying 800.
Five, six, eight, and four.
So you have to do eight here.
In municipal finance, that one year makes a big difference.
And you could, so here's the other thing that you could do, is you could say, we want to maintain eight because that puts us in a good position for our next five-year plan, of which we have a previous 26 million dollars, probably multiply that by three, right? And that's, you're talking about 60 million dollars worth of work that you're going to have to tackle over the next five years. Not really, you're going to whittle that down just like we whittled this one down. But it puts you in a better position for the next five.
I have no problem keeping the bathroom in, and voting accordingly to keep that in. I'm just happy to work the numbers to see, but I don't think it makes a dramatic enough difference to scrap it, in my opinion, but.
So if we put bathroom seven back in to the final year?
Yep. Not quite. Is that number five?
Thank you.
And that's when we tell them that we'll put the generator in, but there's gotta be a certain split. I don't care whether it's 75, 25, 80, 20, whatever, it's gonna make that number work.
Right. And we don't have to make this decision now, but in 2027, if you had a surplus of 400, I would vote to put three back with two. So you're doing two bathrooms in one year. The more progress you see, how many more time to.
This is, if you wanted to move three.
With two in 2027?
Oh, this was still three. Sorry, I haven't moved that. Three is still built into this.
Okay.
So this is just four. When we're done with these numbers, we're gonna look for a motion. It's kind of like you're handing your math test into the teacher and writing as you're walking down the aisle.
This is one, this is two and three. This is four, this is five, this is six and seven, and they're all escalated properly. That is escalated properly. And the roof has been combined.
Click on the formula in 7I for me, is that?
Seven I?
Yeah, the thirty, the 2031, is there a formula behind that?
Yes. So this is your previous year's funding, right? The funding balance, so $10,000.
Yep.
Plus the $500,000, plus the work that was done over the previous year times 35%.
Yep. Be very clear with that explanation, because I think they're gonna ask a lot of questions about that 1.3. The majority of that is the reimbursement.
The reimbursement.
What I have off to the side here, like I will reiterate it in the presentation, but that is also why, as part of the spreadsheet, I have the explanations of how these numbers are calculated here. And should they ask for the live sheet, I'm happy to.
This, sorry, this ends with us having a surplus in money?
Well, but you're also having no projects slated for 2031. So let's say that we've got, which.
If they have a large surplus coming to say.
On average.
Yeah, but going 2028, we're planning, we're just not there yet. So that comes to the GMF bathrooms, the windows.
Right, I just wanted to. See that 1.2, that like if we move something over to that, so does it look like such a big surplus?
You can't go to the right.
The reason that's a surplus is 35% reimbursement from that 1.2, no matter what you put in.
We have to stop at 2030.
We're gonna get 35% reimbursement.
There, if that helps. So the, this year, you would have, for your next five-year capital plan, you start planning that in 2030. And then you can go in for it, and then essentially 2031 would be 2026 on the sheet, right? And then you just start over. And so you might have, like, we're increasing our project value per year, and you probably need to continue doing that. And so that's 2.6, this is 2.4. So if we had, you know, 2.8 million dollars worth of projects, then you're still operating at a deficit. So as, as we're looking at these numbers up here, the starting number means nothing if you're not looking at the cost that you're gonna extend over the year.
Remembering we started at 26 million.
Yeah, for what we have to do, we don't want to worry about that yet, okay? There's plenty of times to fine tune that, because we have to go through this whole process every five years, essentially. Do it right. And it hasn't been done right for the last 10 years.
Does anybody think it would be beneficial for us to show, and maybe it's in here, and I'm just, at this point, kinda reading the numbers and zoning out a bit, to show what we're getting back for that 35%? Like, so from me looking at it, I'm like, oh, there's a surplus. So I wonder if certain people on town council will be like, what, there's a large surplus? But then we can explain the 35% and what we're getting back because we're doing projects.
Sure, so, so what I can do is I can, for each fiscal year, is I can add a, add a row up here.
Yeah, just to show, because I'm trying to think from, I mean, the whole ride process is kind of nuts. So I think for somebody who doesn't understand it, and, you know, it's been a couple of years of being, like, I'm just starting to, it's just.
And just so you know, with the building committee, we discussed that some of these projects, we might be able to get another 5% bump for health and safety.
So I talked with.
So maybe it could be made, but maybe not.
I talked with Holly about that today, my boss, the director of our office. The, that I misspoke yesterday is not health and safety, it's security. So, and security projects where specifically 75% of the cost of the project has to go towards security upgrades. So I misspoke about the health and safety flash deal with the last time.
I shouldn't forget that at all. Unless we have super security in bathrooms.
Unless, unless you're talking about a high-security project, or unless you're talking about a regional project in a regional school district, which that one.
And that was just a change in what RIDE is offering, is for reimbursement.
Are we where they are now?
I like what's on, I like what's on the screen, the board, with that separate column of the year by year, I agree with her. I think it's smart.
So this has all the work, it has the ask we took, we're gonna have to ask one. It has that generator at the end, which we will begin the discussion of some form of percentage for that. And Patrick, it's a muster of what we need to get to rock. Before we change our minds, can somebody make a motion?
Motion to approve the stage two construction project as presented on the screen.
Second.
Motion made in second. All right, further questions, comments? We're going to be, this is going, this is going to the state, it's going to the town. We will have to, and she's now had one for the FBI, we need. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
So what I will do is I will print this to PDF as it is, and I will send it to Richard Deacon.
Very good.
Thank you.
I just want to mention just something, just so the audience is also aware. So this is the stage two approval process. So we're going to town council on September 16th. I believe we've been granted 30 minutes to explain all of this on that evening workshop. Later in the evening, they will vote yes or no. If they vote no on the stage two projects, it does not go to RIDE, which means we go back at least one year to start over again. If they vote to approve, because there's school billing committee approval, there's school committee approval, and if town council approves stage two, we can start the renovation project right summer of 2026. If we miss the window, which is the week of September 16th, it pushes back this entire year. So the costs in there are based on the balloon, the estimate for summer 2026.
So when is that window that they have their approval?
All right, so, so the.
That night.
Sorry.
Yeah, so the.
September 16th.
So the timeframe for this is, we got special permission from RIDE to submit on the 15th, pending the approval of town council on the 16th. So what we were trying to do is get town council to meet with us next week to talk this through, to explain everything. We're gonna be sending everything to them tomorrow to get on the agenda. And it will be up to them to digest it and ask questions through the chair if they decide to do so. We're just gonna have to submit on the 15th. Then we're gonna have to go to town council and explain, you had to submit this to RIDE, you still have to approve it. If you don't approve it, we have to retract it from RIDE. And then what we'll do is, one of the options is we go through a period of time in the fall, where we discuss how town council and the school committee want to accomplish this next five-year plan. And we go back in on February 15th, which is the next deadline, because you do it twice a year for RIDE. Go back in on February 15th for that approval, they would get back to us sometime toward the summer. You would have almost no time to get a design done and anything else. Waiting for summer or doing it during the season.
And you give it to your residential directors, et cetera, et cetera.
There is a tiny chance that if town council doesn't approve it, we can have some conversations with them, we can bring in some hooks from RIDE, we can all have a huddle and talk about it, we might get a month extension, if we're lucky. And then they still might accept it, based on our submission on 15th.
But this is why we asked for the meeting on the night, to be able to give them ample time to, us to present the information that's digested. Unfortunately, they were not available to do so, so.
Gonna have another time. But remember, remember, our job is to do the educational part. We are, the state law, our job is to take care of the schools, conditioning schools, and everything that has to do with education. Their job is funding it. That's it. Their job is not to say, well, why even the bathroom on the second floor, or why even, that's not their job. That would be way out of the line. Now, their job would be, okay, well, we, how do we know we can afford this? And then our job is to say, well, you can't afford not to, because it would be so far behind the curve.
Or they could, especially if we have the funding in the past, not after 10 years.
Those years are missed, you're right.
Any additional questions that I can answer about the RIDE process or the submission?
No, thank you.
So one, Kathy from SLAM is assembling all of the information. Those emails started coming in around three o'clock today. Deb Faith with Colliers is currently working on getting those compiled. All of that will be submitted to, like, the full package will be submitted to town council tomorrow. When we submit it to town council, it will be sent out to the chair of both the SBC and the SC to distribute that information to the two committees, so that you can also review it in a whole. And it will come as a, either a file structure or a PDF. They no longer require us to submit giant binders, which everyone is grateful for. So it'll be an electronic submission on, on the, this portal. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We, that was 11, I'm gonna go back to 10.
Mr. Chairman, if there's any questions on 13, 14, 15, 16?
Let's see, maybe we might as well, let's start, school building, we can do 12, right? School building committee update number 12. You've seen it. We're fine on, we're doing good on the, the two emergency projects, they're done, they're basically paid for, we'll pay them tonight. We saw them, the finished product. Here's the last part of this whole process, and updated. Item 13, discuss review approved SLAM architectural invoice number three, not to exceed $3,190.50.
Motion to approve SLAM architect invoice number three, not to exceed $3,190.50.
Second. Motion has been made in second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Item 14, discuss review approved SLAM architectural invoice number four, not to exceed $55,350. And just so you know, the first one was for emergency things, the second one here is for what we're talking about right now, okay?
Motion to approve SLAM architect invoice number four, not to exceed $55,350.
Second.
Motion made in second, any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Item 15, discuss review approved Colliers project leader's invoice, number 0001079269, not to exceed $11,967.
Motion to approve Colliers project invoice number ending in 69, not to exceed $11,967.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Item 16, discuss review approved Red Oak invoice number two, not to exceed $238,160. This is for the ISV government.
Motion to approve Red Oak invoice number two, not to exceed $238,160.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Item 17, discuss review approved Red Oak invoice number three, not to exceed $19,950, to be held and paid at the discretion of superintendent's once all closeout documentation has been received.
Motion to approve.
I was just gonna clarify, this is their routine payout, which we typically hold until everything's closed out, end of the year.
Motion to approve Red Oak invoice number three, not to exceed $19,950.
Second.
Motion made in second, any further questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Item 18, discuss review approved Clean Care payment application one, not to exceed $231,800. Clean Care was the, our CTE.
Motion to approve Clean Care payment application number one, not to exceed $231,800.
Second.
Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Okay, that takes care of that. So we're gonna go back up now to item number 10. Discuss review and approval of virtual learning plans in 25, 26, stupid year.
Thank you.
Thank you, goodbye, yeah, thank you, I'm sorry. That's, that's everything for you. Virtual plan, should we get it?
So in your packets, you have the virtual instructional day plan for this school year. As you are all locally aware, you have had a virtual plan in place here in Smithville for several years. Our round, our law 1622C allows for districts to have a virtual plan in case of inclement weather or emergencies. But RIDE requires an annual review of that plan and annual approval from the school committee, the union leader representatives, and the administrators, as well as the superintendent, to proceed for each year. So every year, those are required, if a district is going to submit a plan, to be reviewed and approved by the commissioner. So I recently reviewed our plan that we have had here in Smithville. And in reviewing it, I made a slight modification. It was highlighted in the plan on page eight. And the reason I made that modification was after reviewing how the district has been utilizing the requirement of a minimum of three hours per day when you do use a virtual learning day. Again, only for emergencies or inclement weather, and how you choose to use those, you know, is certainly in the discretion of the committee here. I felt that we really needed to address the change that was made to the Rhode Island general law 1622 in June of 2024 that really affects how the governing of the school day and the school year changed at that time, and the changes that are happening to the RIDE data collection for this year. So in the past, we used to be able to get approval for waivers for emergencies. So I thought we wanted to jinx the roof projects. So if a roof were to start leaking, and you needed to close down a school for a handful of days, you could actually go to the commissioner and get up to five days waived, and the schools would not need to make that move. When the amendment was made to 1622 in June of 2024, that changed everything. The amendment was made that said, yes, you still have to have 180 days. But it changed to say that no matter what you do, if you have long days, you have short days. If you have a 90-minute inclement weather delay, if you have a 60-minute early release day, no matter whether you have long days or shorter days, you still need to now meet the 1,080 school hours and the 990 instructional hours every year during those 180 days. So as I reviewed the plan, it said on a virtual day, and again, I know that, you know, these are for emergencies, we're not using these regularly, our plan only had three hours. Now, normally that would be fine, because that meets the requirement of a minimum of a school day. But if we have, for example, the roof, we need to close down for five days, there is a blizzard, we need to close down for five days. RIDE is this year going to be collecting in our calendar collection, not only whether we were open today. So right now, we've got, you know, several school days, and we've had our regular school day, we average about six and a quarter hours a day. We're now recording not only that today was a school day, but how long was today's school day? And they're keeping a running tally to make sure that we've met the 10E and the 99E. And they're keeping a running tally to make sure that we've met the ten eighty and the nine ninety at the end of the school year. So if we have a snow day in the past, it would just still count, I mean, if we had a delay in the past, it would still count as one of the one hundred and eighty days. And it didn't matter whether at some point, if we had a delay for a teen days or we had, you know, other emergencies, we actually didn't have to meet the ten eighty, which is odd, but we didn't have to do that. We had, there was regulations allowed for those waivers. So now we're gonna start submitting that. So every time we have a snow delay of sixty-eight minutes or ninety minutes, they're gonna start taking away from that time that we've completed. And there could be a problem at some point, if for some reason we did have an emergency or extended snow, we really wanted to use a virtual day because we have excessive days, which is certainly something that I would recommend. So if we have, we're required to have the four days at the end of the year for makeup days. So let's say we had four snow days, we'd be fine. If we started running into a situation where we're going to need to make up more than four days at the end of the school year, we may wanna consider the next snow day on day five to start using the virtual plan. So that way we're not going till, you know, the last weekend. So that's something to consider, to kind of keep that up. But also if we have a situation where we need to close down. We cannot get those waivers. And so if we are in danger of not meeting the one thousand and eighty hours, we're going to make that time up. We can do that through virtual days. And so we would wanna go longer than three hours. So that was the change that I made, was if there was an extenuating circumstance where we were gonna be shut down for more than three days, just use that as an example, because we do have a little bit of a cushion. We can go a few days and not have to worry about making up time. Last year, as an example, when Saugat had a roof problem, they were closed for five days. They are just barely, they're at six hours and five minutes a day. They did not have enough of a cushion, because they had a couple of, it's this early, sorry, delays in the morning because of snow and what have you. So they were not going to meet the ten eighty. They ended up adding a half an hour a day to the school day for three months to make up for the time that we, that they were closed. To say that people were not happy about them, you know, is an understatement. And so that was one of my pleasures of dealing with, well, is that RIDE. It's not something that I look forward to doing here while we're in Smithfield. So these are kind of, you know, think of the policy as a, as an insurance policy, just in case. I understand that, you know, we wanna make sure we have that time to take snow days and we have those four days at the end of the year for that reason. This would be more for extended time, emergencies, a lot of snow, we wanna have that buffer in. But I wanna make sure that we also don't run into the situation that we don't have the required school hours and instructional hours. So I met with our union leadership, superintendent and all the principals. I made that minor change on page eight that talks about just shifting from a three-hour virtual day. If we just have a one-off, so we have one day, we're gonna go virtual for some reason, we can do the three hours. We should have no problem meeting the ten eighty, I'm not worried about it. But in the event that we are going to have an extended closure, because, you know, a roof leak would be something that would be certainly more than just a day or two, that we would then announce that we're shifting to a full day, a six-hour day, six, six one to five-hour day of virtual instruction. So we don't run into the situation of not meeting our minutes. I don't expect it to happen, I hope it doesn't happen, but it's more of an insurance policy to make sure we have, it's in there so we don't run into situations where we have to extend now the school day or any other number of things or go beyond our four makeup days at the end of the year and start getting caught. So we have the agreement of all parties here. I'm looking and seeking your approval to make that modification to our plan. I'll look for your signature and then I will submit to RIDE for your approval.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
The only thing what I'm thinking about is the six-hour time. So although we're looking at extended closure, there are students who aren't going to be able to attend to a computer for six hours or attend at all. So while we are looking at the betterment for, you know, most of the population of students we have, there are a population of students right now, we're going to be losing that instructional time completely. So how would we make up for that?
Yeah, so, I mean, the plan does already account for some modifications and accommodations for students with IEPs, for example. You know, there's those opportunities to have some makeup services on other days or in other ways in classroom. So that is actually already covered in the plan for students. It's not ideal, they'll be allowed, you know, to take the normal breaks and what have you. As a district and as a school, we need to account for those six hours. But if, if students need to, as part of their six-hour day, need to take that break as part of something that maybe required due to their, their ID.
I just worry about those students that are, you know, maybe it's a new lesson and now they can't, you know, attend, I mean, there's long meetings here when I was over now, I'm not gonna lie. Um, so students staring at a computer, um, now they're missing a new instruction, now it's gonna set them back even further and then they're gonna come, so six hours on the computer for anybody.
For anybody, it's not ideal. And we did that during COVID and to be honest, I never wanna go back to that yet. I'm with you on that a hundred percent. Again, this would be for extenuating circumstances. If there was a situation, let's just say, you know, I go back to the room, I feel like I don't wanna jinx myself. But if we had to close for, you know, an extended period of time, if it was just this one building or a building, I mean, there are other avenues of students then being able to come into another building and getting some, you know, tutoring and that type of thing. So it would really depend on the situation. I think it's more just a safeguard in case we ever had to do that. We are not kind of locking ourselves into the three hours. We're also kind of letting our educators and our professionals and everyone involved that we kind of reserve the right to switch to that day. Doesn't mean that we have to. My, again, my concern was making sure that we're meeting those hours. But there are a multitude of ways to make sure that any student that's not getting the services, especially if it's continuing to live on a building, that we can shift those where those students maybe are, are coming into another building and everyone else is on virtual.
Right.
You know, there's, there's ways to kind of do that.
Just making sure those families know that option too.
Absolutely, yeah. And so that would be a part of all the communication. So in the plan, it does talk about communicating out, you know, that we make sure that we communicate to families, how we're gonna communicate to that. So none of that has changed. So that would just be on our part to make sure that we're saying, all right, for the next couple of days, we're shifting to a six-hour day. And these students would either be getting, you know, additional services by recording to X school or B school. So we would just need to communicate that. But yes, I hope to not use it, but again, I'm just looking at the bigger picture to make sure that we are covered for instructional time at the end of the year.
Any questions?
Well, what was the question?
Yeah, the, so should we be seeing two schedules within the plan then?
So we would just follow a normal schedule. So in the plan is a three-hour schedule. If we had to go to the six-hour day, we would just implement a regular day like we would be here. It would be the normal schedule of that day. And so if it's a seven-period day, if it's a five-period day, whatever it is, you would just follow your normal schedule for that day.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? If not, a motion to accept it, that's what's here, that's what we're done.
Motion to approve virtual learning plan for twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Second. Motion made second, further questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Now we're bumping back down to four. Item nineteen, nineteen, yes, nineteen, second reading and approval of district's facility usage policy.
So what you have, both the hard copy and in the portal, is the draft of the first plan that was provided to you. I'm behind that, you have a redline version, different changes in formatting and also much more specific. It's also gone through legal review, so I did wanna point out, it's a little bit more comprehensive policy to be added into, approved, certainly onto the school committee policies.
Any questions on the proposal here, on the plan? Now, as part of this plan, you gave us the facility rental fee schedule, correct?
All right, so as a separate discussion item, so currently in the policies, and if you take a look, there's two, two versions. It actually is listed as a policy, they're two different items. Typically, rental fees would not be part of a school committee policy, because then they can't change without school committee approval. And as you can see from the original plan, these fees have not changed since 2016. So my recommendation at the beginning, or at the end of last year, was that we keep, have a, keep the policy for school facilities, but that the rental fee schedule should come up for a review, especially if we're gonna make any changes to it, to the school committee. But it should not necessarily be a policy unless you wanted it to remain that way. So my, my draft there, again, working with Justin Martin, who has looked at other, he's our facilities person, who is doing the programming as well as a little bit of HR, looked at some surrounding areas. Had put an escalator on here twice from twenty-six to the rest of the level, much higher cost. We lowered those so that it wasn't as significant of a jump. Again, for instance, the auditorium, he said if we had an escalator, you put in there about two to three percent from 2016. That brings the cost well over four thousand dollars a day for, for profit.
So in the policy, we have under requirements for use of entrance fees. Okay, this is on pages, this is here.
Right.
Okay, and it says fees, filing rental custodial, lighting, audiovisual and/or fire police fees may apply.
Correct.
So should we just put in there something along the lines of, say, see current facility rental schedule? Just so that, so here's your policy, but now it bounces you off to this with the actual dollar numbers, which as we say, may change.
I think it's great idea.
Further questions, Mr. Val.
Are we right now discussing the change in rental fees as well? Or is this just the, the policy for the facilities usage? So it seems like we're lumping both together.
Well, no, we're not lumping, we're doing the, the usage, okay, the policy that we're voting on. The next item, and I jumped ahead of myself, is the discussion of the fee structure, which we have here, which we will then actually get into. I think that's act two, act two, or whatever.
Well, but an important part is that there, the proposal is to remove the fees from the current policy and separate the two. And that going forward, this superintendent would have discretion to make changes to that when they need to. But as she said, she would review it with us, but wouldn't require our approval. So that is the change between, so yes, while you're only voting on the policy and not the fees.
Right, we're also approving the, the, for the next, I know.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Further questions on the actual policy now, this is item nineteen. If not, motion to accept the policy, second read, with that note that was gonna refer to the schedule.
Motion to approve the district's facility usage policy with the addition of a reference to the rental fee schedule.
And a second.
Second.
Motion made second, further questions on the actual policy? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Now we have the actual fee schedule. But if you wanna talk about that, it will be referenced in here, which is not part of the policy.
So just to add also, there's a couple that are highlighted in green. They're highlighted in green because they were not on, either the facility wasn't there before, they just were not on the original rental fees. But certainly there's potential or there is interest in handling those. And again, we're looking at being able to acquire fees that would go to the maintenance of certainly our facilities and as well as the services to ensure facilities such as the auditorium, the new lighting and the sound system that we do have in place, some of that is trained in that equipment. And that we also ensure that on Saturdays and Sundays where we are, where we would be bringing in custodians for overtime, that that, that, that cost is covered through the rental fee, which was not in the old fee.
And we have used capital funds dollars in the past years to approve these facilities. The gymnasium has been approved, the auditorium has been approved. And while I don't think anybody wants to have to increase these fees, the fact of the matter is we do have operating costs behind it that support the need to increase this.
Correct. So this is not required, or do you have any further discussion? None?
Yes, some of them are just drastic. And it is, my, my concern is that it's just gonna be passed on, moms and dads, that's my big, that's my biggest concern. Because some of these increases are fifty percent. And I know that we haven't revisited these since when? Twenty sixteen?
Twenty sixteen.
Am I right? Okay.
If I can address that, because that's an excellent point and spoken with Amanda before. Most of these nonprofits are outside groups. So it's, for instance, most of these are not Smithfield. So most of our groups use our facilities for free. And what we've done is, on the weekend use, we've charged what were substitute rates for custodial. So this isn't really indicative of what we charge most of the folks that are using our facilities.
So just because it's gonna be starting soon, I'm gonna just shoot my personal example. So like SYVA won't be charged six hundred dollars?
No, they will not. So, no, so in fact, we've very good relationship with SYVA, they're in our gyms all the time. We have, both Angelo and I spoke with John, who is the president. They have agreed to increase their fee to, for the weekends, to cover the cost at twenty-two dollars an hour for custodial fees. So that is what they are charged. So as I said, these fees will largely apply to those groups that are coming in from outside.
So they're very bothering in and they're just absorbing the increased cost savings.
Correct.
And that will go with if baseball needs it or softball needs it, are we all same thing?
It's the same thing. So we wanna keep our kids in our facilities. We just, we're a little bit upside down right now in terms of what we're paying for custodial overtime.
Captain, thank you for clarifying that. Any further questions? Like I said, this is discussion, so if not, we move on. Are we good? Okay, yes.
So do you think it would be beneficial to make a column for town recreation programs for pricing? You're right, because that's like to have.
Just to show transparency.
To show transparency of what the, like, our, because I think people might see this and be like, wow, they're charging our town basketball six hundred dollars. Just to see, I don't know, just to show.
We can, we can pull out certainly the town rec as well, but also in the new facilities program, this is certainly with the discussion. We would also have it easy to be able, for town rec as well as for instance, our parent houses, et cetera. We'll jump, be able to jump over where these fee schedules are and just goes to straight approval. So we'll be able to exempt groups as well. We can certainly add the column.
Okay, we'll move on now, if everybody's good, to item number twenty-one, communications. Copy of reservation, the town's who hired in the district, and the school twenty-six budget transfer. And we have superintendent's report.
Thank you, Lynn, excellent opening of our schools this year. I wanna thank our administrators, our teachers, our staff, our families. Really, it just, it's great being in the schools, a lot of happy kids, a lot of happy faculty members. Just a really strong start to our school year. In addition, our open house schedule, so I did want, I will send out a letter to all of our families just to remind them that our first open house is Monday at the high school. In addition, Pleasant View will be next Wednesday, September tenth. So I know the principals are sending home times for these. Gallagher Minna School, due to the Rosh Hashanah holidays for staff and for our families, the principal has requested that that change. So it is being moved to September sixteenth, that evening, and Lauren is sending notes home. Old County Road School is on the seventeenth and Le Port is on the twenty-fifth. So this month we will have all of our open houses, so hopefully we'll be able to attend some or all of them. And lastly, I just wanna say that Governor McKee and Senator Tocoiden will be at one of our schools tomorrow. They chose Pleasant View for a special bill signing into law. So Senator Tocoiden, who as we know, as he says, bleeds green, has chosen, we're lucky to have him coming to the Smithfield public schools. has chosen, we're lucky to have him coming to the Smithfield Public Schools. He has sponsored a bill requiring cameras on the outsides of school buses. That will be starting next year. Governor McKee, who just a couple of weeks ago was at Old County Road School talking about Learn 365 and how we're using it, he's gonna be signing the bill tomorrow at 10:30 at Pleasant View, signing that into law. So I want to thank Senator Tocoiyan, certainly appreciate Governor McKee coming in. And we'll have some classes outside because this is a civics lesson live. Thank you.
Really gonna be good, so they say. All right, there you go. Okay, let's see. Next item we have here is the public forum. And consider items for future agendas. No. So you're all dying for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Look at that, four people said it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against nay, the ayes have it. Bingo.